All right, we are back. So let's go ahead and start or go back to our briefing. Schedule and we've got WSU.
Hello.
Hi, Kala. How are you?
I'm doing pretty good. I'm trying to figure out if you can see me here. Oh, okay. Um, so I am briefing today on the amended Washington State Department of Agriculture not weed contract. We received additional funding for 2020, July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. It's an amendment to an existing contract, but it's just put in more money into that pot. We have $20,000 from them to continue treatments along priority systems here in Mason County. Including Mission Creek out of Belfair, Little Mission Creek as well, Coulter Creek, Sherwood Anderson, Stimson, Finch, kind of around primarily in northern, northern Mason County. And just continuing the work that the program has accomplished along those systems. So if anybody had any questions regarding that contract or the work that we've accomplished so far, we've been out to Mission Creek this season already, and it's looking pretty good and kind of thinning out not weed along that system is high priority. So hopefully we'll continue the good work.
I have no questions, like just a comment. I think you guys are doing a great job. I like your outreach and I appreciate what you do to the, to help trying to control the weeds in Mason County.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
None for me. Supportive.
Supportive.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and I see our S A O folks online. Hey Tammy, how are you?
I am doing well. How are you?
Oh, good, good. So shall we just turn it over to you?
Um, yes, actually I have Vinnie here with me. He's our, the audit supervisor of the audit. And we have a PowerPoint presentation if he can be able to present that.
Absolutely.
Yes, it should be in just a second here. So yeah, good morning, everyone. We appreciate you taking some time out of your day for us to join your your weekly briefing meeting. So as Tammy said, I'm Vinnie Shield. Once again, I'm returning as the supervisor for the current audit you're going through and also joined by Tammy Lane, who is again in charge of the audit. She's the lead and will be handling most of the day-to-day work on the audit. So our goal today is to present some information to you about the audit, share some resources, make sure you're informed about the work that we'll be performing. Earlier, Tammy sent out some information from us that has our official documents, and I believe that was included as part of your briefing packet. So we will make some references to that information, but we'll be going over the key points here as part of our presentation today. And so before going into detail a little bit about our office, we're tasked with being the auditor of all public funds within the state. So that includes both state agencies as well as local governments. We have about four hundred professionals spread out in fourteen offices all throughout the state and we in total conduct roughly twenty-four hundred to twenty-six hundred audits each year. So on this slide, you'll see the various types of audits that we perform with the ones highlighted in blue being the three that we are performing this year for Mason County. And those are also the the most common ones that we perform. In addition to that, we do other audits as well as we perform cyber security audits. We follow up on concerns submitted by citizens of areas who have no potential issues with with the government's operations. We also perform have a performance audit team who focuses on more you know, large-scale issues. They perform a lot of work with with school districts. For example, one area they look at is they looked at previously is, you know, what sort of impact school start times have on on children's education and how will they perform? You know, how much time they should have for for lunch, you know, when would when recess should take place where that should be before or after lunch, all that sort of thing, and how it impacts their their academic performance. Couple other other recent audits looked at ballot rejection rates. They looked at multiple counties in the state to see if there are any statistics statistically significant differences in rejection rates between counties. In addition to see if any particular demographics or age groups were you know, had higher rates of their ballots being rejected and that sort of thing. They also performed another follow-up audits for the state patrol to see the the sort of progress they're making on the addressing the backlog of testing sexual assault kits. So they perform a whole, a whole wide gamut of audits. We perform others as well, but for going going too long about that, I will pass things off to Tammy, who will describe the three audits we're performing this year.
Thank you, Vinnie. For Mason County, we're going to perform a two-year accountability audit. So this is going to cover fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. We had pushed off the accountability audit in twenty twenty-one and only did a financial and single last year. So this audit, we're going to do a catch-up and make sure we cover both audit periods. In our planning, we use a risk-based approach. What we're looking for is maybe there's some trends that we could see payroll trends or financial statement trends. Because of course, we can't look at every accountability area. And accountability areas really are more of safeguarding of resources. So is the county safeguarding the public assets, following their own procedures, following state laws? So it is a little bit different than a regular financial or single audit. And using our risk-based approach, these are the audit areas that we are going to cover. So we are going to look at accounts payable, specifically credit cards, electronic funds transfers. The electronic funds transfers throughout the state have been a higher risk area. So we're going to cover that as well as the clerk's office for general disbursements. For procurement, we're going to look at selected projects or purchases that are outside the normal procurement scope. So these could be joint purchases, purchase exemptions, items like that. We're also going to look at use of restricted funds. So this is where we're going to test if the roads and building permits funding is used appropriately because those are restricted funds and only have allowable has restrictions on the allowable use of those funds. Cash receipting, we are going to look at timeliness and completeness of deposits at both the treasurer's department and the clerk's office. Open public meetings and financial condition. These are some areas that we do in our planning and we try to take some additional steps in reviewing that so that way we can give a good report as to the fiscal health of the county as well as following open public meetings with reference to minutes, executive sessions and those items. And the last area that we're going to look at is self-insurance for unemployment. This area is required to be looked at every two years. And since we are doing a two-year accountability audit, we're going to look at that this year. Next slide, Vinnie. Now, the financial statement audit, this is just a one-year audit because we did perform a financial statement audit last year. So this is going to be January first of twenty-two through December thirty-first of twenty-two. We are going to be issuing an opinion based on regulatory basis of accounting. So this is the bars manual. And this is because the county reports as cash, which is allowed in Washington State. Of course, though, this will also have an opinion in compliance with GAAP. So it will have that opinion in the report as well. We will be completing our financial statement audit in accordance with government auditing standards. We will look at the internal controls over preparation of the financial statements to determine if there are any material misstatements or any instances of material non-compliance over financial reporting. Next slide, Vinnie. With that, we are also going to complete a federal grant or what we call a single audit. So this is going to cover the same audit period as the financial statements. We will be issuing an opinion in accordance with the government auditing standards, but of course, as well, uniform guidance. We all will look at the adequacy of the county's ability to follow the federal grant requirements and then identify if there's any instances of non-compliance with those requirements. For the audit programs, we are going to look at. We have three different programs that we're going to look at, and that's community development block grants or as known as C D B G. The highway planning and construction cluster, as well as the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds or ARPA funds. And all of these in total are approximately eighty percent of the federal expenditures reported by the county. So we are getting some good coverage on these these grants and what's reported. The levels of reporting, you may have already understood some of these through your other audits, but I will go over them briefly. Levels of reporting with exit items, these are small minor exceptions that we determine are small housekeeping items that we think the management needs to be aware of to make some improvements in those areas. So this is not referenced in our audit report. These are just small items that are given to fiscal and the the management of of the county. The next level up, though, is management letters, and these aren't actually in the audit report, but they are referenced in the audit report. And so this is something that we would go over in the exit with the commissioners and of course with management. And the highest level is an audit finding, and that is where there is significant non-compliance. And so this information is included in in its entirety in the audit report as well as the county's response would also be included in the audit report. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Vinnie to go over some small little housekeeping items.
Yes, we're nearly through it now, but some other important information to to share with you. First off, our our office is committed to protecting confidential data. We recognize that now through the various audits we're working on, we may come across or have to review some information which is protected. And so Tammy set up a secure way to share that with with Leo. And we again want to remind you that to make sure to use that if any potentially sensitive information is going to be shared with our office. And in addition to that, we also, of course, can come physically onsite and review your documents if there's anything in particular you feel best with keeping off the internet and having us look at it the old-fashioned way where we're still available to do that. Secondly, we also provided an estimate of our audit costs in your packet. It is a little elevated from the estimate we provided at the end of last year's audit. We were planning on having to perform three federal grant audits. That's the main main reason behind that is that we had an extra federal grant to look at this year than we were planning on. Thirdly, if wanted to let you know about our audit dispute process, we always try to work out things here on the local team. But if for whatever reason you have any concerns about the overall audit process or the conclusions we're coming to, we do want you to know we do have a dispute process that puts you in contact with progressively progressive levels of management at our office, all the way up to the elected head of our office, Pat McCarthy, if needed. So we want you to be aware of that. And then lastly, we always like to remind our governments about loss reporting requirements. So if you become aware of any known or even suspected losses of public money, please note that state law does require each government to file a notification with our office. So that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to immediately drop everything and go on go there in person and investigate the loss, but it does allow us to keep track of losses and look for trends and that sort of thing. And it forms us when we're planning our audits each year. And then in addition to that, cybersecurity issues are an area of increasing importance. So there are some new requirements there that we want to make sure you are informed about. First off, the state attorney general's office, if the county is involved in a single security incident that impacts more than five hundred Washington residents, they need to be notified about those sorts of incidents. So we included some information to their website about how they can be contacted. And then in addition to our office, beyond losses of public funds, if the county experiences any cybersecurity issues related to its financial system, we also need to be notified as well. So we included a link in the packet for how to do that and notify our office. Another question we often receive is whether our office gets to go through the joy of the auditing process. And yes, it's it's only fitting that we also undergo one ourselves. So we are members of the National State Auditors Association and we participate in their peer review program. And so every three years, members of other state auditors' offices as well as employees of federal agencies come to Olympia and they select a number of our audits to review and make sure we're meeting industry standards and that we have the right processes in place to be performing audits up to standard. So we most recently went through that last fall and they gave us the best rating, which was a pass. That's the highest level of assurance that a review can provide, but it does show auditors are auditors are not always very good at giving out kudos or saying job well done, but we are happy to to have passed that. And then beyond audits, we do, we do other things as well. We have other support services in place. First off, our local government support team, they provide accounting training. They participate in a number of trainings at conferences throughout the state as well as virtually. And they also offer a help desk. So if the county has any new or unusual accounting events happen or wondering about how to implement any new changes, and you can always feel free to reach out to them and receive receive a response from them quickly. In addition to that, we also have the Center for Government Innovation who provides a number of of resources at no cost for governments. And they offer lean process improvements and change management facilitations as well as team building activities, leadership workshops to help local governments become more effective and efficient. In addition to that, they also produce a growing number of resources which are available on our website. So that provides guidance on a whole slew of different areas, everything ranging from payroll to best practices for making electronic payments to guidance on providing take-home vehicles to employees, all sorts of things. One, one of the resources that we wanted to highlight and that we shared as as part of our packet is their trust but verify document. And this is mainly geared towards elected officials concerning the area of fraud. Something we've seen is that elected officials, if they're not relatively experienced with the government process, might not always know, you know, what level of oversight should they have of a government's operation since it's obviously going to depend on on the size of the entity and a number of other factors. So we provide this document provides a lot of useful guidance as far as preventing fraud, detecting it as well as responding to it. So it offers a number of red flags to look for and and all sorts of other useful informations that was included as part of the end of our packet. And that's everything we had to share with you. So want to thank you again for your time and be happy to take any questions or comments you have for us.
All right, thank you. I'd like to ask Leo, Leo, it would, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just that I'm I'm always available to with to help with the audits, coordinate. If you have any questions or concerns, I'm I'm always here. And I'm looking forward to working with the state auditor's office again this year.
Well, that's good to hear. I'd be concerned if you were not.
So it's always a good time.
Good. Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments?
Not for me.
Thank you for everything. We'll be talking again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. And and feel free, you know, it goes both ways. Feel free to reach out to us if you have any questions, too.
All right, thanks, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Leo.
Thank you.
All right, so I guess we're still with an auditor. Steve, your turn. Can't hear you. Steve, we can't hear you.
Steve, you're muted.
I'm not muted anymore. Thank you, guys, for your time this morning. I have Jen Rose with me here in the studio. And we're thankful to have a little opportunity to talk to you guys about some enhancements that we want to make to our recording software site. And really, just for background purposes, over the past year or so, I've had a number of citizens approach me about concerns about title fraud, land fraud, that type of thing. So I started looking into it. And as it turns out, in twenty seventeen, and I don't know how prevalent this is in Mason County, by the way, but in twenty seventeen in the United States, United States, there were nine thousand six hundred fifty-four cases of land fraud or title fraud totaling fifty-six million in losses. And in twenty twenty-one, that number had grown to eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-eight cases resulting in three hundred and fifty million dollars in losses. So it's a growing it's a growing crime in our country, really, and it's a prominent strategy right now for money laundering. So I've been asking Jen, what could we possibly do about this? And so she went off and started working with our our supplier, Tyler Systems, and has some great information to share with us, not only about the fraud piece of it, but also most important is upgrades or updates to our recording system. So Jen, over to you.
So what I did was I contacted Tyler. Currently, we have Eagle Web as the way that that our our public can search our doc recorded documents online. And I don't know if anybody has ever, any of you checked out that Eagle Web. It's not exactly user-friendly. They have an upgraded version called Public Records Access or Records Public Access. And it is way user-friendly. This thing, it's fantastic. It's it's a site that my grandma would be able to go on and use. And that's kind of how I judge it. So it's fantastic stuff. Along with that upgrade, we could purchase the Fraud Notify system. And what that does is you can sign up for it, name, address, all the all all different ways that a document would be recorded. And when there is a document recorded, either with your name on it, with your address, with your parcel number on it, it will send you an email and notify you. That way you can see, was this fraudulent? Is it accurate? You know, it kind of keeps people in the loop of what's going on with their property. So although we don't have, you know, a a large problem yet here in Mason County, we do have a lot of citizens that are concerned. And we get these questions daily about, you know, wanting to put a lock on their their recording, wanting to be informed anytime there's a recording against. But as recorders, we by law have to record whatever whatever we are handed. So they could flat out tell us it's fraudulent and we have to report it. But this gets the public to know what's going on and and in what they're in their property to know what's going on. The Public Records Access, which we do have to purchase in order to have the Fraud Notify, it's fifteen thousand dollars a one-time fee. The Fraud Notify is seventy-five hundred dollars as a one-time fee. And then there is a fifteen hundred dollars a year reoccurring maintenance fee. Right now, we currently already spend between thirty-nine and forty-one thousand dollars a year for maintenance fees for Tyler. So in the scheme of thing, fifteen hundred dollars is not a large jump. We do have funds allocated in my O and M, the operation of maintenance budgets. Currently, right now, there's a forty thousand dollars that we have allocated for a digitized fraud draft that is not going to get done. It's kind of reoccurring money that we keep hope we're going to get to. So we were, we're going to reallocate twenty-four thousand of that to purchase the software, get our get our onlines up to snuff and hopefully help us a little bit out here. You will be able to do certified copies online constituents. They can go on and purchase them and do it all online. Should take away from us having to to constantly take time away and help those customers. They can pay for it all online. It's a fantastic system that I'm actually very excited about.
So in summary, it's great work, Jen.
Thanks.
And you've come up with an update to the system that will allow us to bring a little bit more revenue into the county.
Yep.
It will allow us to be more efficient in the recording office. And it will provide tech or provide citizens at no charge a service for notifications if anybody's messing with their title. So that's our story for today. We're sticking to it. Any questions?
All right, Commissioners, any questions?
Just a quick comment, I guess. I believe TJ has reviewed all this from IT.
Yep. CJ's been looking at it. He's got his thumbprint on it.
We talked to TJ. We also met with we also met with our our council just to ensure that it's not against anything beings that we are spending a yearly maintenance fee on it. So we did meet with with him on that to get his reassurance that that this is on the up and up one hundred percent. Currently, there is only one other county in Mason that offers or in Washington State that offers this type of program. There are many counties that are looking into it, but they haven't they haven't done it yet. They haven't purchased. They haven't made that decision. So so we would be the second county in Washington State to offer this type of of for our customers, for our citizens.
Once again, Mason County in the lead.
All right, Commissioner Netherton?
I've thought about this quite a lot over the last year or so and how real it is, how necessary it is, and even when there's losses, are the losses really to our customers or to those that are buying into it? But at the same time, I guess if the opportunities are there, let's get it before we get our people in trouble, I guess.
Right.
Agreed.
We agree.
And yeah, I saw you pop on. Do you want to confirm the 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 budget impact?
Yeah, I'll I'll take a look at that and confirm it. I just wanted to make sure it was run through the I T steering committee.
So we did talk, I did talk to TJ about doing that. He was going to look into it. I haven't heard back from him. He said he didn't see that it might not necessarily need to. He was already aware of it all, but then him and I both went on vacations and I haven't heard from him since, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Um, I think it sounds like a, a great opportunity. Um, if we can keep our. Citizens alerted of. Potential fraud. I hear all the time about. Our elderly being taken advantage of because. They'll get a phone call or they get a. Computer message or a text or something. The more that we can protect our, 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 our folks, the better in my mind.
Agreed.
So we're looking at a November implementation.
Hoping.
And uh, that will line up with our uh, anticipated server updates or, and so we'll keep you guys posted.
Okay, I, I want to just make sure that we get. Before moving forward completely, I'd like to, to make sure that, that it's um. Good with the budget. And, um, and maybe have. TJ let us know for sure that it's, it's good to go, but it sounds like you guys have checked with him.
Yep.
But just, um. If you could check in with um, Jennifer, just to. To give us a, a, another assurance.
Absolutely.
Mr. Trask, I actually checked in with TJ about this topic and, and he, I, I heard the same. That he was good with it and felt like it wasn't a, wasn't a big IT lift. Uh, but definitely budget side would be Jen.
Okay. That's good to hear.
Thanks, Mark. Any other questions?
Commissioners?
Not for me.
All right, once again, Jen, excellent work.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're at the courts, Patty and Patsy.
Good morning, happy rainy Monday morning, commissioners. I have two things. The first item is jointly with. Uh, District Court, uh, this is. A, the, the JAV system, uh. Which is the, the audiovisual recording system used in our courtrooms. Uh, needs to be upgraded. The software needs to be upgraded to suite number eight. We are on seven and the support for. Uh, the suite seven ends on December thirty-first of this year. And we need to upgrade. To uh, suite eight, the, the cost. For uh, Superior Court is twenty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars for the four courtrooms. Um, with the six courtrooms. Um, you know, the four in the courthouse, in the modular, and in juvenile court, and then for District Court for the two. Courtrooms in uh, building ten. The, this is a, a straight, um. Software upgrade with one exception, currently in courtroom two oh four here in the courthouse. Uh, we don't have the ability to monitor what's going on in the courtroom, courtroom through JAVs. Monitor the sound. We can see the picture, but we can't see the sound. And so we want to upgrade that so that we can monitor. Uh, what's going on, uh, both visually and orally. Uh, we did run this through the IT Steering Committee, um, and they approved. And Patsy, did I miss anything or mess anything up?
Nope, I think you hit all the bullets.
Where would the funds be coming from?
This uh, this is not something we are budgeted for, so we will need. Uh, current expense. Funding for this.
Uh, what about court improvement or? You have two accounts, I'm trying to remember the other one offhand.
My understanding with the trial court improvement is that we are holding off on expending funds out of that. So that when building ten does go. Live, the funds of that will be used to furnish the, do the furnishings for the building.
So it's twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven for Superior and, and forty-two for District.
In order for this to move forward, we would need a, uh, an amendment, right? To the budget?
I believe so, yes.
You could um, put one in the works and it, it could come out of um, the Trial Court Improvement Fund and then the furniture, I mean. There's nothing set in stone that the furniture has to come out of the Trial Court Improvement Fund, and I believe that was. Something um, that Frank had talked about. I'm not sure if Mark. Um, was aware of that at all. But I don't know.
Oh, absolutely aware, yeah. They were, they had been, they had been kind of earmarking. I believe District Court had been earmarking those funds to. Um, to use them for the fixtures and furnishings in building ten that will be necessary.
Couldn't remember how far back those discussions went.
Yeah, yeah, it's something that they've, they've talked about with me about anyway. Um, I believe that that has been a commissioner's discussion, so. I've never, yeah. I, I know that that intent exists.
But at the same time, this can come out of that and we could be dealing with, uh, because we're gonna be talking about furnishing and the things to do with. Uh, at that time as well. So it can go either way, but at least it's already in the budget, already, we're already in their funds.
Yeah, and we could just have a budget amendment in the works, um, for current expense if you choose to do it that way. Um, either way works, and I haven't looked at Trial Court Improvement. I'll look at that along with um. The auditor's request on their budget. And um, let you know if there's budget authority in there. They might have um, funds in ending fund balance. Either, you know, it might have to come out of there or in, within their budget authority, I'm not sure.
Either way, I'm gonna be supportive of it. It definitely has to be done. It's a, it's, it's not a, you know, whether it should be done or not, it should. It's just a question where the money should come out of to properly uh, do it, but I'm supportive of moving forward.
As am I.
As am I.
Thank you, commissioners. My item two is uh, for juvenile court services, uh, this is. Uh, a contract, a grant contract with. Uh, with the State Department of Children, Family and Youth. Uh, to receive a grant from the Annie Casey Foundation for Juvenile Detention Alternative Programs. Uh, it's fifty-six thousand dollars over the next two years. This is a continuation of a grant that we've been doing since two thousand nine. And it's just expiring and it's, we need a signature on it to continue to receive that funding.
Good with me.
Yes.
You got three.
Beautiful. Thank you. That's all I have.
Easy peasy.
Good to see you.
You too. All right, so this brings us to public health.
Hey, good morning again, commissioners. Okay, so we're gonna start off with Ann.
Morning, Commissioner, sorry you're doing this morning. Um, I have a uh, contract. That we're. We're putting in for, um, it was supposed to be an extension, but the, the Courtney Council. Had some staffing issues and were unable to get the extension done before the expiration period uh, back in December. So now we have a. Kind of renewal of the contract, use the remaining funds. And this is for uh, pick work, which is, you know, pollution identification and correction work.
Yep.
In Flit Canal. Uh, the amount is forty-four thousand five forty-six. There's a, a, another extension to this that they hope to put in that will give us until the end of December though. These are the responding, um, and potentially beyond that, but uh, right now we're, we're getting this put in place. For the moment, so we can at least start spending some of the funding.
I have support.
Yep.
You've got three, yeah.
God bless the pick program.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is with Melissa.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Melissa.
I have one item. It is a con, a new contract with Northwest Resources, um, for the Behavioral Health Program, the SOS Program. Social Opportunity Services. It's essentially the care coordination, case management that Northwest Resources does with. Individuals who have S U D and mental health, um, partner a lot with therapeutic courts and the reentry services. Um, or the reentry programs that we have. Um, so this is a program, it's a contract for just one year out of treatment sales tax. Um, and it's already been reviewed by legal. If approved, we'd ask that it be moved to the August first action agenda.
I'm supportive, commissioners.
I have as well.
Thank you.
Make your record here. So that's all I have, commissioners, pending any questions.
All right, commissioners, anything for Dave or Steph?
Not for me.
Okay.
All right. Easy. Melissa, I wanted to thank you for, for your help in, in these. Past few weeks as well, so appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So are we ready for support services?
We are.
Alrighty, I've got, um. I'm, I'm gonna do a little bit of a, of a reorder on it real quick, because I, Mary has a meeting at eleven that she needs to go to, so. I'm gonna run down to our lead pay request, if that's okay, Jen.
Yeah, that works great.
Alrighty, so Mary, do you want to talk about our lead pay requests for Tammy and Nicole? Are you looking it up right now?
Oh, I'm seeing if you can hear me.
Oh, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, um, so I just had two lead pay requests. Uh, one is for. Tammy Wright over in Department of Emergency Management. And the other one is for Nicole Wilson in Human Resources through uh, November first, twenty twenty-three. And then Tammy's, I believe, in an ongoing, so we're viewed as part of the annual budget process, um, in just like a month or two. And these are um, met criteria for lead reasons, um, over in HR, we have some. Continuing education and directing and reviewing of work for our new analyst, uh, that's been pretty important by Nicole. And then um, in Department of Emergency Management, I think um, the reasoning on the request that John had put was. You know, running two departments is really important that Parks has a lead and so uh, DEM needs one as well to help support functions and operations.
Oh, go for it. I was just gonna say, or, or ask for any comments or questions.
Uh, no comments or questions, but supportive of both.
So can we uh, eventually here have a discussion, Mary, maybe on the side about uh. Changing the actual job if, uh, to incorporate that. That person for that one five split. In the job description.
For. Oh, yeah, of course.
And I think the same uh, go, we should have that discussion of what Nicole's doing and what. Maybe if it's working for, I guess what I'm saying is, if we keep bringing it back and it looks like something is working, maybe we need to change. A position to uh, and encompass that, all that work if it's possible. If it's not, if we're barely holding on by our teeth and can't, and we know it's gonna collapse, then no. But if, if not, then maybe we need to look at some restructuring there.
So I think for HR, it would definitely have an end date and be done. Uh, we're just waiting on our analysts to get up and running all the way and then. Um, for DEM, I think that would absolutely be worth conversation for sure.
Yeah, I, I, I've always had a little, a few concerns about lead pay going from year to year to year to year to year for the same position. So um, yeah, I think, looking at their job descriptions, seeing if it's something that's, that's always there, I think is, is good and then. Lead pay doesn't, is not necessary for that. But they're fully compensated too, so. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Um, all right, Jen, you're up for ARPA.
Okay, so I don't have anything in the briefing packet for ARPA, but I wanted to leave it on as a discussion item, um. In case there was anything that we wanted to talk about, um, specifically with the Housing Authority.
Just to fill in the rest of the board, I've kept Jennifer in the loop of what's going on, uh. There's a lot of things that are happening, the documents are being put together and Jennifer. Uh, incredible as she is, is, is agreed to try and help, so uh, we just need, we need more time as things are coming in uh, to come before her and. Be able to make some great educated decisions on where to go and how to take care of a few of these things.
And so we can look at bringing that back next week, um, along with any other updates, um, for ARPA.
So I can, I can update the board on some communications that I've had with Housing Authorities, and they went out and. I, I think if you remember, uh, originally when we rece, when we gave them ARPA money to, um. Improve some of the, the rooms that they have, so when they become vacated, um, they're very dilapidated and abused. And so they were utilizing their own staff to go in and do these upgrades. Uh, and, and really make them livable. Again, I know that some of the rooms were pretty bad, um. I believe how they are going to move forward on that is they're actually contracting, uh, with a contractor to be able to do that. And so that'll, that'll be nice because they're specifically are doing that work. We should get good documentation associated with, um, the specific things that they're purchasing and the time spent on those. Uh, so I, I, I think that, uh. There's a good path forward.
And that was passed at the last meeting, uh, there, but there's a few outstanding things that Jennifer's still helping them to clean up. That's what I was referring to, but yeah, that, that, that passed the last week. And they are uh, moving forward with it. And again, thank you Jennifer there, because at my request, I actually. Asked them just to please take it over to Jennifer, have her take a look at it, uh, just to be. Smart for all of us, if she didn't mind taking the time to make sure no mistakes were made before it's done, instead of cleaning up afterwards. So thank you for talking with them and, and looking at that, Jennifer.
Yeah, of course, and yeah, we've uh, made it a team effort over here to try and help them out, um, with their. Contracts, making sure that, um, we don't see anything, um, that looks. Odd, so, yeah, we appreciate them bringing that over to us.
And the other groups that they're working with are learning how to do all of that, they're getting registered with all the right people. And all the right entities, as you know, there was a, a change in uh, uh, who the management companies were in. Whenever you're dealing with the government, as you already know, it's a lot harder. To jump through every single hoop and every single document exactly how they want it, especially when you're talking about, we're the only one in the state, we have a tax credit for one building. We have HUD for another, and then we have uh, um, USDA for another. Uh, we, we do the whole gambit here in Mason County, and as far as I know, we're the only one that does that. For the housing authorities.
It sounds like it's been quite, quite the ride over there, so. Glad you're there, Commissioner. I truly do appreciate Jennifer bringing her wisdom and knowledge and experience.
Now, I took the time and showed Jennifer some of the pictures. Mark, if, you know, I don't think it'd be appropriate to do a, a, uh. A PowerPoint on these things. You've seen a few of these pictures as well. If you don't mind, I'm gonna make copies of some of them and some of the fixes that have. Got, gotten done, uh, try to make sure that you look at it to make sure no personal information, because some things are on the walls and that you would not believe it as well. Uh, and ask you to put it out to them, uh, making sure that we protect the identity of anybody that, uh. Was in these places.
Yeah, I, I would say let's be careful with some of those pictures, just because if it is a public record, I don't think I have the ability to withhold that from the public, but. Um, definitely would be happy to share the progress that they're making with the other commissioners.
Okay, great. So that's all we have on that. Hopefully we'll have, um, a, more of an update next week. Um, so we'll bring that back. Uh, the next item that I have is the Chart of Accounts Update and the Munis Financial System Expansion. So, um, we're making a lot of progress there, um. So Leo sent out the, um, proposed chart of accounts to all of Mason County, um. Employees on July sixth. And, um, we're now working with, um, all of the departments to make sure that, um, their subsidiary systems. Um, that they, um, are working on what they need for their. Um, chart of account, um. Crosswalk, so, um, we're still hoping to implement by the end of September, um, barring. You know, any of this is subsidiary systems, you know, barring that they can get their, their piece done within that time. Frame, and there's still, um, some other work. And there's still um some other work internally that needs to be done um with Munis. So um we're hoping we're shooting for the end of September and um definitely before the end of the year. Um, is there anything that you want to add, Leo?
Um, no, not really. We're just uh working hard on it. Right now, I'm going through uh setting up the due to do froms and the the Munis, uh the next step in the Munis crossovers, crosswalk. Just kind of working down the checklist.
Well, I for one am super excited about this because it 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 brings all of us more on board, um all departments. And I think I guess it unifies us a little bit better in our in our accounting processes. And so I'm super excited that and 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 appreciate all the time that both of you and everyone else has put in on this because it definitely a a transparency benefit for the county as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be awesome when it's done. We're moving forward, which is exciting because for a long time it seemed like it was um um just a a work in progress. And now we actually have a template um or a not more than a template, kind of the starting place for the crosswalks. And that's good.
Yeah.
So we'll continue to give you updates as we move along. So that's all that I have for you this morning.
Sounds great. Oh, Leo, when are you gonna get that hovercraft?
Um, no motorcycle.
Looking forward to that.
Wait, let let's just stick to the car, Leo. We want you want, we want you to make it to work safely.
Um, all right, I'll try.
Okay. Uh, next item on our list is uh janitorial services, uh request for proposals, Dan.
Good morning. Kelly's out in the field working, so I'm filling in. It's time to go up for proposals for our janitorial services. So we've put together an RFP and would like to put it on the agenda so we can advertise that and then make our selection this fall.
I'm supportive. Is this one a strict uh low bidder? Or is there some leeway or?
It's it's a request for proposals. Are you thinking to bring in like known performance?
Well, I I've been for the first time in a long time. I've been very happy with what I've been seeing. We've gone through so many that uh that were very disappointing, to say the least.
I mean, for any bid, if you have had poor performance, that can be a factor in deciding who to award to, even if it is a low bidder. And we did this year, I worked with Kelly and we tightened up our expectations in the RFP. So we're thinking that will help select not only on the price, but it will tell the vendors what we expect.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, all good going out.
Thank you.
So that'll come before you on August first?
Yes.
That's all we had for support services.
All right. So on here for Commissioner Discussion, I see that we have salary, set the salary commission. And
Yep. So Commissioner Trask, this is your auditor Steve here. And I've been having conversations with um County Administrator Neary and uh Mary over in HR and others with the uh update to the state law of pertaining to salary commissions. And it sounds to me as if there's an appetite to move forward with formation of a of a salary commission, but I just wanted to tee it up for your formal uh review thoughts, consideration before we actually take any any uh steps in that direction.
I'll jump in commissioners. A while back when we restructured and and put all the elected officials based on us and and what we do. Uh, we put the slow roll on anything that could happen in the future. Uh, back then I brought up salary commissions. I think it's the best way to go where it is literally not even uh in our hands and we take uh some faith in those that we bring in to be knowledgeable and make good decisions. The new structure the states put together has made it even stronger and better. Uh, I think it's time that that we do it and we move forward. It will uh it will both uh take it out of political hands and put it into the public's hands. But hopefully, uh, this new structure will make it a well-educated decision that would be made that by doing this, I think we automatically just support what their decisions are. Nobody would ever go down. They'd be why rated if they were uh at least for the end of their term for elected officials and stuff.
Commissioner Shudy?
Yeah, so I'm I'm supportive of this just in 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 general, I think, but my concerns would be who staffs it? What's the what's the process look like? I mean, I think we need to have some more detail before uh before we go too far down the path of committing to it. But I, you know, I I need to maybe see a little bit more on that side of things before I jump all the way in. Um, in theory, it's great, uh but I want to see how that would kind of be applied here in practice.
I agree with that.
It all looks good on paper. But um, yeah, so Commissioner Shudy, to your point, well, I've been delving into the and researching what those next steps might entail to form the form the commission. Once we have that lined out, I'll bring it back to you guys. But we're just looking for the uh the initial uh response from from you all to know whether they even head in that direction or not.
And it, Steve, is it your understanding that this is is this something that your office would staff? Or I know that there's a lot dropped for some of the seats on the salary commission.
Yeah.
Is this
We we pull
on the auditor's office?
The auditor's office pulls together the uh members of the commission from from the uh from the public. And uh you guys have a a spot to fill on that commission as well with a subject matter expert. What about after we actually get it up and running, Steve? Is that something that the auditor's office manages? Or is that something that Human Resource would have to manage? Uh, my understanding is the auditor's office pulls the commission together and uh but with that, I think the formal uh configuration of that commission requires board approval. And then we set the commission in motion. The one thing I want to work with you and uh Mary on is what what type of guidelines or or uh framework we would provide them if any, so they could get through this in a in a expeditious way.
Right, might might also be a good a good idea to so that we're not reinventing the wheel. Um, I know other um counties um like Lewis and I believe this was this was put forward by Thurston County because they went from a three commission to a five commission. And so they they wanted a an avenue to figure out what the salary should be. And so um that's why this passed originally. But I I do think that a lot of other counties, according to the meetings with with WASAC that I attended, a lot of counties were very interested in this um because it does make it a way for the public and for others to have input on on the elected salary. So not not just the the B O C C, but um all the the elected salaries. So I think it's a great idea. It'll take a lot of work.
Yeah, it'll take a lot of work. But so here, so just I guess in summary, it sounds like you, it sounds like the three of you are in favor moving forward as far as laying out the the process and the plan, how it's all going to work. And then we can get back to you with those details.
Yeah. Steve, I'd appreciate it if you'd send them to us individually first before briefing on it, so we could actually look at it, maybe have some input also and look at some other ideas and things that we may have issue with that we don't like. Uh, so this way we can maybe get it out there first.
Uh, we'd be happy to do that, Randy.
I'd like to point out that this is probably the greatest year for doing this. I have never, in all my years of being here, I've never seen how we have handled all of our uh negotiations with our unions and how we've been structuring to pay people. We've done all the work that's necessary to go through and actually give spot increases where necessary to uh to actually bring people up to where they should be along with their regular increases. It would be wonderful to have something so well done, be done for all of the elected officials as well. And this is the only way to do that. We can't really do it that way.
Right. And I guess for the broader audience's awareness, right, whatever the whatever that uh salary commission comes back with in terms of recommendations, they they aren't effective until uh the next wave of elected officials take office. So it's not as if we can use that commission to give ourselves a a raise.
I don't I don't know that that was my understanding.
Yeah, I don't. I think you're incorrect there, Stephen. Maybe when they changed it, they made that. But I think uh it goes into play as soon as it's decided if the commission uh put it up there. Because the the commission, salary commissions existed for many, 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 many moons. So let's take a look at that that too.
Well, I may be wrong. That was my last read on it. And like I said, I'm gonna
I'm sorry, Steve. No problem. Currently, we're soldered your uncle is that it uh if the if the commissioners uh don't have a salary commission and the commissioner is actually making a recommendation, then there any increase associated with their salary would not go into effect until the next individual holding that office for that term. So they could actually make adjustments to the other separately electeds that could go in, uh but theirs would not be impacted or or change until the new till the new um
That makes sense.
cycle comes up, yeah. Whereas this salary commission, they're independent, they come forward with a recommendation um and they can actually pass that and and it could go into effect since the commission does not have any say in in what they determine.
Except for if they did make the decision to go down in rate that uh uh we're overpaid or you're overpaid uh or any of us overpaid, then that gets why rated until the next election.
This could happen.
Hey, you never know.
You never know. Okay. Well, thanks for hearing me out on that one, and we'll get back to you guys with more details and a proposed plan forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, do we have any um calendar updates or we could save that until after Loretta? Steve, you have your hand up?
I kind of hit that by accident, but um I just want to give you guys a heads up. I'll be coming back with more details, but we're we're putting the the last details on a on an agreement with the Secretary of State's Office for data sharing of with uh information pertaining to and within the vote law voter registration database system.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve. All right, Kelly, um Commissioner, do we have any any calendar updates real quick and then we'll move on to Public Works?
I have, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Randy.
I don't think so.
Uh, I had one. I don't think I mentioned it last week, but I might be at the um County Republican Party meeting uh virtually tonight.
Okay, sounds good. I have a couple of um emergency meetings for Community Action Council. But I think other than that, that's about it. Yep. All right. Let's move on to Public Works, Loretta.
Morning, Commissioners. We've got a real light agenda here, very light, just some reminders on calendar update items. And I did get a email this morning from Crab and they are um wanting to confirm who's attending. And so I did confirm Commissioner Netherland that you would also be attending.
Yes.
Yeah. We've been, I guess the other thing, just a quick update, we will be opening one of the lanes on um the Harstein Island Bridge to traffic. Mike and Dave and crew were out earlier this morning to take a look at that with our contractor. And uh then they will start work on the other lane.
Loretta, do we have any uh any need for equipment or anything to be stored out there? I had a email from somebody's putting together a new center and was wondering if we have any need to store or any partnership opportunities there?
For this particular project, Commissioner, or just in general?
Just in general, they they could be so removed out there.
Yeah, possibly. I will pass that on to Jeremy and Mike and and see.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Is it primarily equipment or materials?
I think it, I I think right now it's it's open because they're looking to uh build a new center and and looking around to see what other uses could could be helpful there, including uh um uh fire, uh public works, uh any other partnerships that might be, even the library, if they want to put a little something out there.
Okay. And is this on the island itself?
Yes, yes.
All right. Okay, good. Thank you. Good to know.
Commissioners, anything else for Loretta? Wow.
I know, I was kind of in shock. I I was still waiting for her to speak some more, so.
I know. Sorry, I'm kind of wimpy today. I think I might be headed out after this.
Uh-oh.
I guess I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners.
Well, Loretta and I are gonna take a road trip on um next Monday, so I'm looking forward to that. Hopefully, you're feeling better before.
I'll say after she's feeling better. Don't bring it back in here.
Oh, I will not. It's a rare thing for for me to not be feeling well, so hopefully it'll be a a quick quickie.
Yeah, we'll go home and take care of yourself for sure.
And Commissioners, also, Richard will be out of the office the rest of this week. He's in today, but um having a a little travel adventure, so um there's that also.
That works. All right. Thank you, Loretta.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Well, Commissioners, that brings us to the end.
I have one last thing I just thought of, if you don't mind, Commissioner. Oh, so my birthday, uh I'm going away and and somebody, thank you very much for the book because I'm telling you, the only problem is it's got my attention too heavy right now, and I don't know who brought that, but thank you. I'll find out. Uh, there, the risk pool is having a meeting at that same time. And I had a long conversation uh with Derek about some of the needs to get our uh our uh administrators in the in the like completely up to date, not just on what they're doing, working with us today, but what they actually do. What what does it look like for uh our rates and why are our rates going up? You know, uh, to explain to them that right now, uh these attorneys will take things all the way to the end because all they have to do is get one dollar, then they get attorney fees. And so all of them are willing just to hang on. These are the type of things that'd be great for uh one of our administrators to to have an opportunity to learn. Normally, I would ask one of the other commissioners to to take my turn on that. But uh I'd like to recommend that we send Mark. Uh, we already have uh Nicole who can vote. She's on the board and everything. So she can vote, so we wouldn't need a commissioner to be there for that, because he, as far as I know, Mark, you're not listed as an alternative. So uh with that, uh I wanted to see what the commissioners thought about sending him in October uh to do that.
And I think it's great to have an alternate for sure.
Well, we have the alternate already is Nicole, but what I meant is uh do one of you commissioners really want to go? Or uh uh can we send Mark so he could have an opportunity to work with all them? As you all know, the education you get there is pretty good, and uh he'll understand a lot more when he leaves there than he ever could by uh even a risk having meetings with him.
Well, I I don't, I don't know if that, isn't that gonna raise my blood pressure? Because then I'm gonna be really nervous about everything.
Yes, but at the same time, the the increases will already have occurred.
Oh, okay.
Because it's it's looking really bad again. It really is. But there isn't much anybody can do about it because literally uh everything they're 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 taking everything to uh the high end with the idea they get one dollar, they get all the all the their fees, doesn't matter what the client gets anymore. Right? Well, I'm gonna get in trouble for saying that, but that sure is seems to be a reason for uh going forward. Uh, why settle at all if you know you're gonna be getting your attorney's fees and all? Uh, why settle at all if you know you're gonna be getting your attorney's fees and all that, uh, even if they only get a dollar in court?
Yeah, no. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm good with Mark Owen if Mark is available. And where is it?
I think it's the media, but I'll, I'll double check all that.
So as long as it's good with Mark's calendar, I'm, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with that. As long, as long as, because you, you have a ton on your plate. So I don't want to add too much more to make your blood pressure go up too much higher.
I, I just went in, I'm, I'm golden for a while, at least another year.
Great. Uh, that's good to know. Yep, so.
If Randy, if you could, if you could send me that information, I'd be happy to go. I think it's super interesting. And I know that we get, uh, we, we have county administrator meetings where we'll all get together and a a component of those meetings always talks about risk, uh but it's at a very high level and it's at a very um kind of an overview of just, hey, years increases are coming. And and I heard similar uh reports at my last county administrator meeting where they were talking about the settlements that are out there right now is what's really driving some of these costs. And so it's pretty, it is a pretty scary environment.
Yeah, and this is where the actuaries come in. Everybody comes, you know, it's a lot of, a lot of data, you're a data man, so.
Yeah, I like numbers.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I move adjourned.
Okay.
All right, we are adjourned. See everybody tomorrow at the Board of Health meeting.
Bye, everybody. Bye, Steve.